Welcome, everyone, to the work session of the Aspen City Council here on a beautiful June day, the ninth, and it's Monday evening, and our topic of discussion is the lumberyard affordable housing project. I will very quickly turn it over to our staff and our consultants. So please introduce yourselves and let's cut loose.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and Council.
It's okay.
So we're here to talk about the lumberyard affordable housing development. One of your major goals. Haven't been in front of City Council on this topic in quite some time, so we've got some ground to cover today. I'm here. My name's Chris Everson, Capital Asset Department Affordable Housing Development Project Manager. I'm here with Kimball Krangle. She's the President of Gorman &amp; Company's Colorado Division. So we'll give Kimball a moment to talk about some of the topics along the way, but in the meantime, I was going to go ahead and screen share and get started with the presentation, if that's okay?
Okay, sounds good. I want to thank you. I think it was a very well-prepared introduction memo for our board to think about the issues going forward, and now we'll see the pictures.
Great. Thank you. So a little bit of background. Back in 2023, Aspen City Council approved the entitlements for the lumberyard development for a range of 277 to potentially 304 affordable housing units on 11.3 acres of city-owned property adjacent to the Aspen Area Business Center. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. Staff performed a developer RFQ/RFP process in 2024 where we received 12 proposals from pre-qualified developers. We did at the December 2nd of 2024 work session with City Council, described to the City Council that we had narrowed that field of 12 developers to five finalists. And going back also into 2024, Aspen City Council approved a construction contract with Gould Construction for the demolition of the existing facilities at the site. That work has since been in process, and we'll talk about that a little bit in terms of the progress. And so, in general, today, we'll talk about that progress first. We'll talk about the infrastructure scope of work, how we have some changes to the approach that was described in your memo. We will talk about the selection of the developer and the negotiation process with the developer, and I'm referring to developer like you're not here, and the sort of developer model and what that looks like under the arrangements that we propose to put in place. Then we'll get into two topics that I think you are interested in, one being the potential for any worker priority in the qualification process for tenancy, as well as the potential for employer agreements with the City of Aspen, for the potential for employer partnerships there. Get a little deeper into it. Talk about the city funding, how, you know, what the mechanism looks like for the city funding, and we'll then talk about the role of APSHA. And then talk about the timeline as planned under these arrangements, and talk about next steps, questions. And one of the themes you'll continue to hear is that we plan to propose an agreement with Gorman that we plan to put on the agenda for your consideration at the July 9th, sorry, the July 8th regular meeting. And so we'll touch on that sort of over and over in here. That's the flow of information that we plan to go through. If there's anything else that you want us to touch on, feel free to let us know along the way or ask any questions.
Thank you. We do have about two hours set aside for this. It's the only topic of discussion today. I do hope we are wrapped up by six or a little after six because there's a telephone town hall with CDOT for our larger region, and I have some prepared comments that staff has given me to make in on that call. Thank you.
Thanks. So there has been quite a bit of progress this year. I think it's pretty clear when you look at the site today that it looks very different than it did last year at this time. And so the demolition process is essentially now complete. You know, we were able to achieve nearly 94% in waste diversion. You know, that included, of course, taking down the seven buildings at the Aspen Mini Storage Site. Those buildings were made up of CMU concrete blocks primarily. Most of that material ended up getting crushed and is now stockpiled at the site with the ability to reuse that material as part of the infrastructure construction. There was a known amount of contaminated soil that we knew that we needed to remove from the site, two types of soil, one being lead-contaminated soil, typical mining tails, another being some hydrocarbon-contaminated soil. So in cleaning that up, we were able to bring the lead-contaminated soil to the Picken County Solid Waste Center because the material is very similar to what they have to deal with with the local superfund-type requirements related to mining tails at many locations. The PAH or hydrocarbon soils had to be brought closer to where you live, up to landfill facility in Milner who is licensed to handle that material. So that plan was approved by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. That is, of course, still underway. We did find another pocket of lead-contaminated soil that was previously unknown. It is a really thin layer. It is kind of in a slightly large area, a couple of hundred feet by a couple of hundred feet. So that's not been removed yet. We think we may only need to scrape about 12 inches of topsoil and be able to pull that out. That can go to the Picken County landfill. And we have plenty of construction contingency in the contract with Gould to be able to handle that really with no major issue. What we do need to handle is that the environmental consultant, Vertex, they use all of the hours in their contract to provide the oversight of the removal of the material. So you will see a request for additional services by the Vertex Companies. Ben is going to actually bring that forward at one of your upcoming regular meetings to get Vertex the extra hours that they need to provide the oversight while Gould removes the remaining material. Once that is done, CDPHE will be able to give us an all-clear letter, and then that will allow us to hand over a clean site to the developer so that they can start their work, you know, unimpeded by any of those concerns. Any questions on any of that so far?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. What do we need Vertexes for moving forward?
Yeah, it's pretty interesting, the arrangements with these types of environmental consultants. They're both sort of like your consultant, your agent, if you will, but at the same time, they provide enforcement for the state. And so they're kind of wearing two hats when they're on the site. So they will be the ones who actually apply for the all-clear letter on our behalf. And what they say is that the remediation met their standards and that the site is essentially all-clear in their view. The state basically looks at, they've already, like I said, they've already looked at the cleanup plan. And so when Vertex files that report, our expectation is that CDPHE will be able to give us that go-ahead. And so the arrangement with the environmental consultant is kind of that, has that sort of duality to it. It's actually, it can be a little awkward, but it's also very useful as well.
Thank you.
Any other board members have a question?
I actually do have one. How thoroughly or how deep did we pothole the site for these sort of things? There was an interesting story this weekend that the Horse Tooth Reservoir that Northern is building down in Front Range for deliveries to all sorts of communities there, and they've gotten all their permits and they're building it. They suddenly have run into large uranium deposits, and they're very concerned about the uranium leaking into the water, and they're not using any of the water right now. They're not sure they'll be able to or when it would potentially rinse out. So just kind of wondering, because I know there'll be further excavation on the site.
So Vertex has been involved from the start. Initially, they were a sub to another firm, and when we actually started removing soil, we were like, let's remove the sort of middleman here, and we contracted directly with Vertex. So they created a plan with us upfront, it was probably more than a year ago, on soil borings throughout the entire site. So we performed soil borings at locations based on their recommendation throughout the entire site, zeroed in on a couple of areas where we found lead-contaminated soil and where we found the hydrocarbon-contaminated soil. And so then we did additional borings to get a rough idea of the size of those areas. We were able to scope the contract with Gould based on that sort of size and volume. We were able to scope the contract with Vertex based on that size and volume, knowing all along that there could be more. But we did do borings throughout, zeroed in on those areas. So as you excavate, you end up testing the limits of the excavation, you know, and so we sort of have found the limits of the excavation of the areas that were known. But during the process, some of the Gould equipment operators noticed, the mining tails are easy to see.
Yeah.
You know, because they're black, right? And so, you know, they noticed this other area where there are mining tails, and Vertex tested it. They actually had an XRF gun on the site so that they can quickly do some preliminary testing, and it came back hot right away on the gun. They also packaged that up and sent it out to the lab, have it tested. So we know the rough limits of this sort of new pocket that needs to be remediated. So right now, you don't see Gould doing anything out there until we get this additional services request taken care of with Vertex. So Vertex will come back, Gould will come back, finish that area, and then we can apply for that final all-clear.
And what meeting did you say we're going to have that contract with Vertex on?
An upcoming regular meeting. Do you know the date?
The 24th. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And there'll be more information in there about?
Oh, sure.
All of it.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, I was also curious about how the contamination was discovered, and you've answered that. So it was obvious that the mine tailings were, were they hauled there from somewhere else for fill? Sorry. Do you think that was hauled there for fill or, because there's no mining out there?
We walk around the site and speculate, you know, about what they were even trying to do because in some spots, in the spot that is, I would say, nearer the ABC, you know, there's about a foot of topsoil on top of it, and then there's a layer of about six to eight inches. So instead of going deeper, it's more like six to eight inches over, you know, 50 feet this way and 150 feet this way or whatever. And you're like, what were they doing? Like, and when? You know, because there's plenty of topsoil on top of it, so this was capped. It didn't originate here. So someone was doing something with it at some time, and we presume it was some time ago. And then this other area, this new pocket that I was talking about, is almost at the southeastmost portion, which would be up valley, closest to Deer Hill, kind of like buried in the lumberyard site, but it's like thin. It's near the surface. So how that got there, what they were doing, we've speculated ourselves, you know, it's unknown.
Hauled there from somewhere else?
Yeah.
And then the hydrocarbon contamination, is that gasoline?
In this case, you know, it's right near the frontage by the driveway entrance. And if you're familiar with the area in the wintertime, that's where they plow all their snow from this giant paved area, right? Because the lumberyard itself is like, you know, six and three-quarter acres. They've been plowing into that area for who knows how long. And so, you know, you know, all sorts of sediment and other materials from the operation of that facility over all those years, snow dumped into that area year in and year out. It's just been sitting there, building up. And so presumably, at least that's what the environmental consultant sort of thought, but we don't have any other indication of how or why that would be there.
Yeah, it's not like there were buried gasoline tanks or fuel tanks or anything.
No, there was years ago, I mean, when we did our Phase 1 environmental study, it's known that there were, long time ago, some subsurface storage tanks. There's also on file state all-clear letters from the past from when that was remediated. But we did actually do some soil gas testing in that area just to re-verify. And so we've actually gone the extra mile quite a bit, even before we, you know, started the remediation of the soil itself.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Sure. So when we were here on December 2nd, one of the topics of conversation was the fact that Gould was starting with the demolition process. We were starting the negotiation of a guaranteed maximum price contract for the Phase 0.2 infrastructure to put all of the utilities and all of the roadways in place prior to the arrival of a developer on the site for vertical development. That CMGC negotiation was based on an AIA process to collaborate with Gould Construction on coming up with a guaranteed maximum price contract that we could all agree upon through a transparent process. We spent about four months doing that. In the middle of that four months, we did have a plan update where we issued an updated set of plans in January. They were able to bring the updated plans out to subcontractors. In the end, we were not able to agree on a GMP that we were comfortable bringing forward to approval.
And for the public, a GMP is?
It's a guaranteed maximum price contract.
Thank you.
Which, you know, the city commonly uses for projects of this nature. You know, we've been asked some of the why as to why we were not able to work that out. We did sort of learn that, you know, even though the AIA CMGC process, and CMGC means construction manager, general contractor, where your builder sort of acts as an upfront consultant to work with you, to scope out the scope of work and the costs related to the project. So they're almost like a contractor at risk, if you will. And so, you know, they had some, they had experience with the process. We had experience with the process, didn't exactly agree on the details of the deliverables of the process, and that's mainly related to a lot of uncertainty that we were running into earlier this year. We know that, you know, a lot of folks learned a lot from COVID and how they may have done things differently to protect themselves related to supply chain interruptions with the topics that were being discussed earlier this year and some of which still are. You know, there was some uncertainty built into the GMP that we found ourselves unable to agree to related to possibilities, related to supply chain interruptions, related to changes in rates, other macroeconomic conditions that could possibly change. You know, after we ran into that challenge, I was at a conference down at Denver, and it didn't really help our situation much, but it just helped me digest it in that, you know, other people have been experiencing the same types of effects when they're trying to negotiate a GMP in the face of, you know, uncertainty being a discussion on the table. Could we possibly have worked through it if we had more time, if we had unlimited resources, maybe? What we found instead was that a lot of the time that we had planned to save by having the city perform the infrastructure was now at risk, right? Because if we continue forward with that process, we just keep eating into the time that we're trying to save, right? Similar to, we possibly could have sourced to another contractor for a direct contract, we would have had to spend another four to five months negotiating a GMP there, and in part, knowing where we might end up, and in part, knowing that we're just losing a lot of the time that we had planned to try to save. We also started speaking with Gorman about the possibility of them taking on the scope of the infrastructure into their scope of work. And so when we couldn't get the GMP done, that's when we postponed the April 7th work session, which was scheduled to be with you. We wanted to find an alternate path forward before we were here trying to find a path forward. So we're happy to say that we have been able to, you know, work together, and Gorman and their construction resource folks are prepared now to take on the infrastructure. It does delay the start of the infrastructure construction until mid-2026 after we have the first closing, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. So we have unspent funds because we didn't perform the infrastructure construction. So those funds can simply be shifted into next year and be included in the city's contribution toward the developer effort. And again, we'll get to that here in a moment. But is there any questions about that process that I described about sort of shifting that infrastructure to be under the developer?
Anyone? No? John?
How long exactly is the delay?
Yeah, so we had planned to, you know, start the construction of the infrastructure, you know, we wanted to have that underway now. So we wanted to have, you know, a year of work under our belts before we got to the first closing with the developer. We're not going to have a year of work under our belts, and they are going to have work to do to sequence the physical work on-site in a way that kind of saves as much of that time as possible. So on paper, when we look at the timeline, it looks like, you know, we only sort of lose about six months, but, you know, how exactly that's going to play out is TBD depending on that sequencing. And so I would say that, I'm going to give her the microphone in a minute, sorry. But as we sort of jump to the developer model, I should mention, you know, that when we did narrow down from five developers to recommending the selection of Gorman, I mean, there were lots of reasons why. Gorman is like a large national developer of affordable housing, highly capable, demonstrated performance, but in particular in Colorado, in particular in mountain resort communities. And if you don't mind, can you talk about Gorman's capabilities?
Hi. It's nice to see you all. I'm Kimball Krangle. I'm the Colorado Market President for Gorman &amp; Company. This seems really loud. I'll scooch back a little bit. Gorman began operations just over 40 years ago to develop and deliver affordable housing communities to serve the workforce of the communities that we develop in. And I began our Colorado group in 2014, and in that time have had the honor to deliver over 1,800 apartment homes here in Colorado, both in the Front Range and up in the High Country in various communities. We're excited about lumberyard and the vision that stakeholders of your community and the council have put together, and excited to be in front of you today. More specifically, in the High Country, we started seeing a need for that middle-income type of housing for rent that was deed restricted, and started our first development in 2014 of that nature in the town of Vale. And since then, we have developed in Vale, Steamboat, Breckenridge, Silverthorn, Keystone, Summit County. in Vale, Steamboat, Breckenridge, Silverthorn, Keystone, Summit County. I don't think I'm forgetting anybody. Uh, Down Valley from Steamboat in, in the town of Hayden. Um, and so, you know, we, we understand what we understand. We know what we don't know as well when we're developing in mountain communities, but, um, are really excited about the prospect of this and taking over a site that's essentially shovel-ready, ready to go, even with the added infrastructure development. That's typically what we would do in our developments anyway. Um, and so that's, that's Gorman and that's me.
And we, oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
And, and we did tour through, um, a couple of the facilities, uh, one in Breckenridge, one in Silverthorn. Um, the one in Silverthorn, uh, was being delivered at the time, three months early.
And is now 100% occupied.
Nice, nice. And then we, uh, did a quick sort of look at the Keystone facility as well. Um, but you know, similar to the lumberyard in some ways, uh, in some ways different, but, um, uh, strong comps, uh, to, uh, where we are, um, and what we're doing.
Very nice. Phil?
Thanks, Kimball. Welcome to Aspen. Thanks for all your work on this so far. I know, um, it's a long process with a lot of back and forth and so I appreciate it. Which, Kimball, which, which of Gorman's, um, High Country projects would you say is most similar to lumberyard?
There are several that are similar in ways and different in ways even in the same project. But, um, for example, in Keystone, Summit County, we developed 256 units that span different but similar, 30% AMI all the way up to non-income pa, uh, income capped, but with local deed restrictions. In Breckenridge, uh, we have 172 workforce units right next door to 80 tax credit units. So again, that 30 to 1, 21, 40% AMI. APCHA's AMIs are a little unique, as we know.
Yeah, yeah, let me clarify my question. I'm sorry for not giving you enough context. Wh- which is most physically similar?
Physically similar, I would say either in Silverthorn. We have three buildings there. They're smaller than this, um, footprint. Uh, and we also have four buildings in Breckenridge on our workforce deal. But same acreage, uh, Wintergreen and Keystone is 12 acres.
Got it.
So they're all bigger.
And were those, either of those completed within the last several years?
They are all in the last several years.
Great. And on a, on a per foot or per unit basis, where did those projects come in?
You guys win.
Excluding land?
You win the gold star.
Yeah, lucky us.
Yes, you do. Um, you know, the costs are higher here in Aspen for sure than, and, and projects that started pre-2020 are in a different league than projects that started following that. Um, we broke ground in Steamboat on a mixed income project that was, you know, 715,000 a door, so approaching a million a door. Um, different site in a lot of ways, but, you know, the costs are all escalating. And, um, I can go on and on about that, but it's really about balancing your sources and uses and understanding the community vision and figuring out a way to meet that, especially in areas that have, you know, significant land scarcity.
Understood. So putting land costs aside, um, and putting sort of COVID era inflation aside, can you help us understand like what are the significant drivers of cost premiums in Aspen versus these other similar projects?
I mean, on a big scale, uh, it's opportunity cost of your subcontractor base, right? They could either be working at this or be working Down Valley or have projects that are probably in their queue for a year or two already. So that is a big factor. Lack of labor is a big factor that drives everybody's labor's costs higher. Um, big civil projects that are competing with like your CDOT type of projects that are planned ahead significantly. Those are the big drivers.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good questions, Bo. Okay. Oh.
Were they all public-private partnerships?
They all were public-private partnerships on ground lease land. Some were on land we purchased, um, all had a housing authority involved. Um, and I'm just scanning my brain, um, all had public subsidy involved as well.
Okay, thanks.
In exchange for a perpetual deed restriction. And that's really the space that is interesting to us is this is, you know, this is a public good, right? You're providing this housing that is perpetually deed restricted to meet the community need.
Other questions, anyone? Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, and Kimball also mentioned sort of this middle income piece. Um, you know, we have done, you know, some lower income projects, uh, but this project, you know, focuses heavily, like 67% of the units are focused on, you know, 50% AMI up to 130% AMI. Um, whereas a low income project is typically going to be 60% AMI and less. And so what do I mean by that? This project focuses about 67% of the units on APCHA categories two and three. Um, you know, 15% of the units, um, set aside for category one as a priority. If you recall, in the ordinance, those can, if they end up vacant, can be used for category two as well. Um, but you know, a smaller portion of units for category four. Um, and then an even smaller portion of units set aside for category five. So, um, part of the reason I bring that up is because Gorman's proposal focused on that centrally with the, uh, sources that they were going to seek. And we'll talk about the sources that we will be asked to bring and the sources that they will seek for us.
And just as you sparked it for me, we all know that there's been times when APCHA has had a hard time filling some of the low income and the Lytec type of units. So we will be above those units or have, again, uh, a waiver to allow us to go into, uh, higher category income individuals to make sure the units are all filled. That's not going to be a strange condition of the financing that pops up later and then we and you have empty units.
That's written into the entitlements for the project in the ordinance.
Okay, and then of course in the financing that we seek from the state or other partners.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's, there's like, for example, there's no low income housing tax credit funding uh, as part of their proposal. And, um, that wasn't the only piece that we looked at, but it was one of the many pieces that we looked at.
Thank you.
Oh, I jumped ahead all this stuff. Um, so how does the developer model work? Um, we've done this before. She mentioned ground lease on some of their other projects. Essentially, the city puts in place a ground lease, um, for the, with the developer, um, where, uh, the city leases the property to the developer um, with certain terms that protects the city, uh, provides, uh, important oversight, uh, rights for the city, uh, certain conditions in the ground lease, et cetera. Um, the developer then, you know, builds, owns and operates the facilities on the ground lease. Uh, again, this is something we put in place, uh, when we've done public-private partnerships before. Uh, so it is, uh, a good mechanism that we, uh, have relied upon in the past. Um, so Gorman will be operating the facilities, but everything in the deed restrictions will be based on the APCHA regulations. So, you know, we talked just a minute ago about low income housing tax credits. That introduces some different rents and incomes and we're sticking to the APCHA regulations in this case. So all tenant qualifications is going to be based on, uh, the APCHA regulations, APCHA income cutoffs and APCHA rents. Um, and, um, we're going to talk about the role of APCHA in just a minute. Um, but Gorman is essentially the operator of the facility. Um, Gorman has a property management division. Do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, so across the country, in our different footprints, we, um, own and manage over 8,000 units, spanning from deeply subsidized public housing units up to workforce housing, mixed income communities. Um, and Lytec, non-Lytec, Lytec low income housing tax credits vary encumbered with regulatory agreements. Um, so we have a whole compliance team to make sure that we are following the deed restrictions for a particular property.
Thank you.
So we're going to discuss, um, sort of this financial closing that's right now is tentatively scheduled for mid 2026. Um, and, you know, this, uh, master development agreement that we plan to present to you, um, uh, in early July, I keep, is it?
You have the 8th.
July 8th, right, not the 9th. Today's the 9th. Um, but, um, there's a lot of activity that the developer obviously needs to get working on to be prepared for that closing. Um, those are essentially, uh, high level twofold. One, um, everything related to financing and two, everything related to implementation. And then, so I was wondering if you can talk about sort of between the MDA, when we get that agreement in place, um, mid 26 closing, sort of what that process looks like high level to get there?
Yeah, so the MDA lets us start sprinting, which sounds funny when it's a year-long process, but it truly is, um, a quick year that goes by. So as soon as the MDA is signed, we get to sign all of our consultant agreements because it's a, it's a real project.
And one last time for the public, MDA?
Oh, Master Development Agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, our whole team is obviously ready to go. We've been trying to hold ourselves back and not get too far over our ski tips on due diligence, but really dive into the due diligence. We also do follow a design-build methodology with our architectural firm and our general contractor partner, uh, leading to a guaranteed maximum price GMP. That's the method we've used for a very long time, uh, and like it for lots of reasons. Uh, our architectural and consultant teams will issue our architectural documents that lead into permits. At the same time, we've got our financing path that is, uh, running in tandem to identify all of the funding sources, uses, um, ensure the timing is right and coalesce with picking up our building permits, starting construction, closing on all of our financing for that project.
Any questions there? Um, the one thing I, I want to know is, uh, we're looking obviously at a November ballot question. Uh, no new taxes, but approving the bond. And, um, will the MDA be in any sort of, um, trouble or an issue if, uh, we have a failed election for any reason?
Yeah. We're going to get to that in a minute.
Okay.
I can do that then or now?
No, let's stick with your presentation.
Okay, definitely.
As long as you have it covered, I appreciate that.
Definitely plan to talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, biggest thing to close with this slide is with Gorman as the owner-operator of the facilities, um, once we have the closing, the rents support the mortgage that will be put in place on the facilities, right? So there'll be an operating entity that, um, is the owner and operator of the facilities. Um, Gorman will be essentially the operator, property manager during that time. But, uh, you know, the city is not now at liberty to like write leases for units. Uh, we are not going to be, uh, you know, changing the rent income stream in any way. So just want to make that clear that once the deed restriction is in place, they're qualifying and putting, you know, leases in place. Those rents are dedicated to, uh, the mortgage on the facilities and we'll talk about, uh, the city's piece, uh, coming up right here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, first, a topic that I think is something, uh, you all are interested in. Um, and that is to say that, uh, the example used in the memo was, uh, at Burlingame Ranch Phase Three, uh, where council did, uh, put in place, um, a, uh, a work-location priority, right? Um, so sort of above and beyond the typical APCHA regulations and the qualification requirements in the APCHA regulations, uh, you put in place a restriction. Uh, it says a lottery priority will be provided to applicants who are employed within the Aspen urban growth boundary. This priority will be required for all initial sales and all future resales. So that priority lives on in the deed restriction in perpetuity, um, for that work-location within the UGB for Burlingame Three. So similarly, um, you know, council can consider an employment-location, um, uh, priority here, above and beyond what's in the typical APCHA regulations, which is Picken County, right? Um, and also possibly could consider some sort of essential worker priority. And thank you, Bill, for pointing out the facility in Basalt where they put in place an essential worker priority. Was interesting to see that they mostly defined that and then it was partly still undefined. My only caution on this topic is, well, kind of twofold. Council's years past have chosen not to go down this road and in part because, you know, how do you define essential workers? And, you know, we can look more deeply at that essential worker priority in Basalt. Um, but I would caution that we might, if you do want to go down this road, you know, it may be worthwhile to try to define essential worker even better because, you know, for the initial lease-up, you know, it's going to be pretty heavy getting a lot of people into those units. So we're going to have a lot of people applying all at once, you know, as we turn over one building at a time with, you know, anywhere between 80, 90, 100 units in those buildings. Um, but also in the future, you know, long-term, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, um, you know, the operator will surely want to know exactly who is and who isn't qualified so that, you know, there's no losses of rents related to, uh, asking a third party to decide if someone is an essential worker or not. So, um, the MDA as it's currently written and as it will be presented to you, it provides us with six months to hash out whatever priorities you want. So we don't need to wait to sign the MDA. We can sign the MDA and then spend some time working on that. Um, we would need to schedule a work session within the next couple of months, start that conversation, um, so that we can later put a resolution in front of you that meets your needs, uh, and then ask you to sort of codify that into a resolution. We bake that together with the deed restrictions so that it lasts forever. So, any, anything there?
Well, um, just, uh, two things you might touch on and maybe they're further in your presentation as well. But it's my understanding that the approvals allow the potential of building three after 10 years to, uh, the city has the option to turn those into for-sale units. And so, um, we would probably have to, uh, bifurcate and have two sections of these priorities if, uh, possible to talk about, should these ever become for sale? Do the same things apply or would it be slightly different, um, priorities there? Um, and I, I don't know if we're going that far into it. Uh, would they have to be sold at the same categories that we are currently planning for those buildings? You know, just issues like that. So I, I'm willing to wait for our work session to discuss that, but I just wanted to kind of bring that point up. And then, um, the deed restriction will be owned by the city or by the city and Gorman? So that should there ever be, uh, a desire by a future council in 20 years or something to change the deed restrictions? Would council have that ability to do that or would it be both parties?
The deed restriction, like all APCHA deed restrictions, is property of APCHA. Um, and it will remain the property of APCHA. Um, so we don't have any plans currently to deviate from an APCHA deed restriction other than to sort of overlay whatever priority you want on the qualification process. Now, um, there could be, some of the funding sources will have other requirements that we will need to sort of weave into the APCHA deed restriction. And we've done this before. It can be tricky. Um, but typically we're able to use language such like, like the more restrictive of the two or the lesser or the greater of the two. So that essentially what you're doing is you're making the APCHA regulations come to the forefront compared to any other regulations. And we've done this before, particularly with like some of the Lytec stuff, uh, where those HUD, uh, income cutoffs are different and those rents are a little bit different than APCHA rents. So we anticipate that that's probably not going to be a problem. What I would say is that the underwriting of the loans and the financing is based on the deed restriction. So while you can change the deed restriction later on, you can't change it unilaterally. You would need, uh, you know, permission, agreement from whatever, whatever lenders have agreed to the financing based on that deed restriction. So it's not impossible. So it's not impossible, but it's, you know, it's not easy either.
Right, so you want to get them right the first place. No, I just wanted to check, this is thinking, you know, ten, twenty years down the line. And it's not a good example for this project, but in the past, people would sometimes buy a free market unit, deed restrict it within a free market condo complex. And then it turned out in twenty years that the HOA dues became so high or with some sort of special assessment to totally gold-brick the house or the units that we've had to release that deed restriction and things like that. But this, that's not an example for this, but I'm just trying to make sure the future is clear and we understand what the obligations are and possibilities. But this can all be really discussed in that work session and we'll have it early on so that we can really both get community feedback to that as well as agreement among the council.
As far as flipping, building three, condo minimizing that and selling it, won't be able to do that with the financing that's in place on it, but we will have like the future ability to buy our way out of that financing. If there is a council in the future who in earnest wants to consider flipping that, there will be a process. But we, no doubt, will be able to unwind that process and provide the opportunity for folks one way or another to buy those units. And so, you know, that is something that possible, but there would be a lot of details and process related to that.
Of course, of course. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, Bill?
Thanks. It sounds like we're going to have another work session to sort of discuss this in greater detail, but I wanted to express that I am interested in prioritizing employment within the urban growth boundary. I am interested in prioritizing essential workers. I do think that we can come up with a well-defined list of professions, roles to meet that. I don't support what Basalt did for our application, not that there's anything wrong with it, just not for our application in that there's a high priority for those that work for the government of Basalt. That's not of interest to me, but specific roles like, like medical workers and teachers that I would like to prioritize. So I'm certainly supportive of that and look forward to further discussion on it.
Yeah, and it's actually going to be rolled into what I see as the further discussion, which Chris probably has later in his presentation regarding potential partnerships. Because it may be that partnerships with the school district or the hospital or others will already grant them a certain number of units. And we want to make sure there is a significant number of units that are available for the general workforce and the general public to be able to apply to rent there who qualify. So this is a larger work session topic that will really dive into both the role that partnerships play with these folks perhaps being able to secure a unit as opposed to the general lottery and application period for remaining units.
We're there.
There we go.
We're there. And so wanted to make a point of spending some time on this today. You know, the the entitlements in the approval ordinance specifically says the city of Aspen reserves the right to develop partnerships with area employers, to create master lease agreements with area employers, or to facilitate agreements among area employers and potential private developer operators to include master lease agreements, rights of first use and/or blanket leases. Very broad. Purpose of which, I believe, is exactly, you know, what you discuss. And that's why the first item on this list is that the city is not the unit lessor. So we're really not able to write blanket leases under this model. And it becomes a little bit difficult to kind of create agreements where we're blocking out, you know, like a whole floor of a building for an employer, et cetera. Also because the rents are pledged to the mortgage. So how can we accomplish the same goal within this arrangement in a way that's going to work for you and in a way that is predefined so that they know exactly how to fulfill that? And what we've come up with together is using the priority system, the same priority system that we just discussed. But we can create agreements that accomplishes the same goal, put in place agreements with employer partners. I did make note on here that those may be annual agreements. We've since been discussing that those agreements might also live on for a longer period of time. But in any case, the employers still have to qualify, you know, under the APSHA regulations. Those employers still have to pay rent, like everybody else, because of the fact that those rents are going to pay.
And actually, you mean the employees.
I meant to say the employees, just like it says here in front of me. Thank you for correcting me. Those employees, right, so those employees need to qualify, they need to pay rent. But this would work for not only the initial lease-up, but it would also work for like years after years, like five years from now, seven years from now, ten years from now, twenty-five years from now. You know, the city council at the time could put in place an agreement with any area employer to provide a lottery priority for their employees to get in above everyone else, right? And of course, you know, one of the topics on here is that we need to have a cap in place on the total number of units. I guess that didn't make it into my slides, but that is in your memo. We would look to you to tell us, you know, what's the maximum number of units? Let's say there's two-hundred-and-seventy-seven in total at the facility. You know, do you want the cap to be ten percent of those? Do you want the cap to be twenty percent of those? And so to make sure, of course, that there are plenty of units available for at-large applicants who also qualify, but at a lesser priority, right? And so as you talk about sort of that hierarchy of priorities, we would also need to decide, you know, do you want to have an employer-partners employees? Let's say, I'm going to make something up, let's say it's somebody who works at the hospital. You know, they, their work location would be inside the UGB. And so with an employer priority, they might be above like somebody who is, whose work location is also inside the UGB. But since they were, they're part of an employer partnership, they would be prioritized higher. So do need to make some decisions as to what trumps what in terms of the hierarchy of these priorities. We think that we should be able to work that out in the same work session. And again, get that codified into a resolution and bake that together into the deed restriction. Because once we decide that, and I think we do want to decide some basic terms of what an employer agreement would look like. Once we have that in a resolution, we can bake that into the deed restriction. They can go forward with all their work because now they know exactly how everybody needs to be qualified, how all those lotteries are going to work. And we can work together on an employer outreach program, spend some time to talk exactly about what those agreements are going to entail with individual employers at the individual employer level. We have the ability to deliver those agreements at some sort of cutoff time in advance of lotteries so that they'll have those agreements in their hands and they'll know exactly how to perform the lotteries. And we'll also have the ability to potentially have a future annual revenue stream. Because we may be able to put agreements in place later down the road. And had this been a one-time thing, we might not have had that flexibility. So this is kind of the program as we're proposing it. We think we can get it to work.
I think that this is what's been talked about for a very long time when you're doing a project of this size, that it may have the opportunity to really bring in people who don't quote "have the work history" for specialized jobs, which is always a barrier that a lot of employers feel. Then lotteries come up for units we already have and you need a specialized auto mechanic system or this or that. It can be a real challenge because the person you want to bring in doesn't have the work history here. And so that may become part of it. You know, it will be a much deeper work session for all of us to think about because there are the little notes on the bottom, annual fee to the city and the annual future revenues. I think we're going to need to look at what are approximate subsidy costs per unit and then work that backwards from there to say, is it a annual fee that's X amount to secure that priority? Is it, are there some employers who have built up reserves and thought about their own project and they're willing to pay, you know, half the subsidy right up front and have that unit for a longer period of time? Is it something that we look at the subsidy per unit and, and then it's public dollars? It's public taxpayers going into this to say, well, we'd like to recover the subsidy over a forty-year period or fifty-year period through these fees? Is, does that get unreasonable? Will you not have any partnerships at that rate? You know, those are, so it's really going to take us and our staff really drilling down on some of the numbers that are associated with it. It does come with a cost. I think that, you know, for employers to not have to feel like they're renting a room for someone down in Glenwood Springs or that they have their employer that close on call, that, you know, these are the few limited opportunities in town and there will be a cost that goes along with it. It's not that the city is planning on reaching out and doing handshake deals without some acknowledgement of the actual cost that goes into creating those units. So that's how I'm looking at it, at least right now. Bill, your comments?
Yeah, thanks. Piggybacking on that, thinking in sort of a similar vein is like, what are we trying to accomplish with this, right? I agree that there should be some kind of cost for the employer to have this benefit. But what's it doing for us and why? What are we trying to accomplish by extracting that? Are we trying to subsidize? Are we trying to, not subsidize, I'm sorry, wrong term.
Reclaim.
Are we trying to help fill a funding gap in the development of this project? Are we trying to fill a gap in, in sort of the operating cost of the long-term? I need more clarity on, on what your goal is there. You wrote annual fee, which is sort of the revenue side, but what is it on the expense side? And to whose benefit does that accrue? Is this a hundred percent to Gorman? Is it to the city? Is it some kind of sharing arrangement?
Yeah.
Without understanding the purpose of this, I don't really know how to give you suggestions on how to structure it intelligently.
Those are great questions to help frame this work session, absolutely. What was the purpose? And at least to my mind, it is to benefit the city, not Gorman. They are receiving a certain rent dollar that they're planning on. We have to make sure those units are filled. If an employer was willing to pay for four or five units and it took them a little while to fill the fifth unit, they would still be paying that rent to Gorman. Gorman never ends up with a hole in their budget. To me, it's about replenishing the 150 funds so we can go forward and potentially build new housing units, additional housing units, for-sale housing units of which we have great demand. But even more than that, when you look at the financing schedule that's currently associated with the bond issue of seventy million, we're counting on twenty-five million dollar payments or fifteen million dollar payments against the debt of the project that currently would be coming from our tax revenues solely between the real estate transfer tax and the half penny. And so going towards being able to pay those payments off would be a big part of it. The other thing is this is just to help frame the discussion. You know, there's nothing definitive now, we're all talking about conceptual plans on this. But your question is exceedingly good. You know, I've looked at it before, not necessarily in the context of the lumberyard, but thinking, boy, if we just started doing essential employees, we could put a whole post office worth of sixty workers in there and the whole hospital and the whole school and the whole this and that and not have anything left for a middle manager, a chef or, you know, someone who's running the ski lifts. You know, it's just the demand is so high that defining essential is tough. I was an essential worker at the grocery store during the pandemic and keeping the pharmacy running. We don't want that definition. This is not a COVID situation. This is real life for the economy and the success of our small businesses as well as large. So I think you could subscribe that entire project if, if you wanted to. But I think it's more about making sure we strike the balance with opportunity for the general public as well.
All right, I'd like to finish some thoughts, please. I don't disagree, Rachel. I'm lukewarm on this, I'm much warmer on prioritization of specific roles than I am on this concept. But if there's a very clear understanding of what the goal of this is and how it could help benefit the community or our housing goals or this project, I'm open to discussing it and open to framing the conversation around that. I think the MDA, if we're not going to have the specific parameters of this in place by the time we execute or intend to execute the MDA, then I think the MDA should explicitly exclude these types of agreements so that they are off the table until we agree on a framework of them, would be my suggestion. There's just so many directions that this could go in and it may not be what Rachel had intended, I had intended, someone else had intended. And so until we get to a place where it's like, this is the definition of how this program could work, these are where the dollars are going to go, this is how it's going to benefit the community, I think it's sort of off the table until separately agreed to.
May I respond to one of your comments? From our perspective, this is absolutely a community concern and a city council decision. We will just be there to execute it. The reason that six months from when the MDA is signed is we can sign the MDA, still move the project forward so that we can close our first building and go vertical sooner. There's about a twelve-month lead time from signing the MDA to go vertical. That's just the reality. And, you know, if there's a six-month timeframe for, for this decision to be made, that's great for us. It lets it get baked in before we're dealing with our financial partners to talk about a closing and we're great with that.
Yeah, and listen, I'm not accusing you of anything, but if I'm in your shoes and I have the ability to structure whatever I want and the dollars accrue to me as a developer and someone comes along and says, I give you ten million bucks, I get unlimited priority on a hundred of the units. Like, I'm exploring that arrangement, right?
Yeah, they wouldn't come to Gorman whatsoever. So they would, that would be a decision of the city with employers. The thing that would be prebaked is the agreement.
That's why I'm suggesting we sort of just carve this out, there's no agreement on it, they're not permissible these at all until we agree on a structure.
And that's the six months, you know, we talked about that. It's the same six months as the priority program. There's a lot to talk about here, but to clarify, there's no fees related to these employer agreements that are contemplated to go.
To Gorman.
That would be between the employer and the city of Aspen to simply offset some of the funding that the city of Aspen has had to put in. With a cap on the number of units that you want to potentially, you know, use up in with the priority that would come with an employer agreement. And, you know, each agreement would also have its own cap up to the total maximum.
Yeah, thank you. And I thank you, Bill, for clarifying your comment. I think we'll leave it to the attorneys and our staff and Gorman to craft the language in the MDA to make sure that it accomplishes these goals.
Yeah, so the MDA will not have any of this in it. It's already not included, so we don't need to take anything out. The MDA only says that we have six months to codify this.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, I mean, so when you see the MDA, that's what you're going to do.
Kate can weigh in and she doesn't need to weigh in during this work session. She can think about it. Just, you know, make sure that sort of that's not an option until separately agreed to, would be my advice.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, that will be an exciting work session to come.
Lots to talk about there, but we do want to know all of your concerns going into that so that we can prepare for that work session. And it sounds like we may need some extra time too. So I don't want to wait six months. I would like to have this done if possible in four months, but that might take.
We'll get that scheduled because it may take more than one work session. I think there's a lot of issues that will come up along that way. I have a tough sign, trying to think that we have a priority system for job types for particular employers, particularly if they're taxpayer-funded employers, without having some contribution to the actual cost of creating the project. So, you know, we may have some differences of agreement on the table. We're going to have a good framing and all the numbers and be able to take a real hard look at it and we'll get it done hopefully well before the six-month time runs out.
And, you know, without spending any more time on it. And, you know, without spending any more time on it, we tried this before, not Burlingame three, but Burlingame two, we had a comprehensive employer outreach program, had meetings after meetings for, for months and months. And a lot of employers were at the table, but then once the fees started to become clearer and clearer, there were fewer and fewer employees at the table. At the time, the proposition was that they paid the full subsidy, the full sort of unsubsidized cost of the units. That was an ownership project. This is a rental project, so I think we can sort of find a way to incrementalize these fees based on some schedule of values that we're able to come up with.
We'll, we'll all take a good, hard look at it. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so changing gears back to Gorman's proposal. In Gorman's proposal, they estimated the total cost to develop all of the buildings at the lumberyard, all of the housing, at slightly over 320 million. I think it was 323-ish. That did not include the infrastructure, to be clear. And that was to develop the facilities all at one time. I think in your proposal, it said completion of construction on all buildings by the end of 2028, correct? And under that proposal, the city's contribution would be $210 million. However, with the addition of the infrastructure, you know, we are looking at the city's contribution being approximately $250 million, a very, very big number. And to do that all at one time, and we're saying all at one time, knowing that there are going to be two closings, and I'll show you that in a minute, the city would need to take on up to $70 million in debt via a bond that would be issued with, that would be backed up by the revenues in the 150 fund. You know, you talked about the public vote. That will be needed in order to do this quote unquote "all at one time." That level of debt, you know, we've looked at for many years now, you know, 4.2, 4.3 million dollars a year. Interest rates could go up, might go down, we'll see. But even if that debt is some, you know, four and a half million dollars a year, you know, the, the fund brings in well over $20 million a year. We know that we can't always rely on that, but we are by no means up against it. If council has a piece of land that they want to buy in the future in a rush, if council has another project or projects that they want to take on, this won't be a prohibitive, irresponsible amount of debt. And I know debt is going to become a bigger and bigger topic sort of at the federal level. We have no other debt on the fund that we're adding to. This would be for 30 years, but, you know, in the past, finance has been able to pay off debt early. So even though there could be some 50, 60 million dollars in interest, if you let the debt run its full term of 30 years, it could be much less if the debt gets paid off after, say, 11 years or 11 to 15 years. And the fund will have grown to the point where it can handle that by that time. So a future council, a future finance, or the same finance director, who knows, you know, will have some decisions to make. But the opportunity is there to lock in a rate, have the future flexibility to pay that off early so you're not paying all of the interest, so you control your own destiny on interest. Whereas Kimball talked about earlier, construction cost increases. If we instead go down the road of a long-term phased approach, don't know, can't predict what those cost escalations are going to be from year to year. We've seen those be extensive in the past. We've seen long-term phasing, make things cost more, take a lot longer and not get people housed sooner, right? And so we have the opportunity to get people housed sooner, lock in a rate, control our own destiny on the amount of interest. And yes, if the vote fails, you have your decision. It's phasing, right?
Yeah.
And so that's what's at stake. If the vote fails, you end up doing more of a long-term phased approach. We all know what that looks like. We've done it before, right? But if the vote passes, you know, then you have the opportunity to do this all at once and, like I said, lock in that rate. So there's really nothing to lose per se. If you made the decision right now that you don't want to take on any debt and that you'd rather long-term phase, that's the same decision as letting the vote choose that outcome for you.
Right.
So really no difference. So there was a section in the newspaper article that talked about the developers' contribution. And, you know, to clarify, Gorman will be seeking additional funding sources above and beyond what the city will pay, but you're not making a contribution per se. Do you want to talk about?
I left my checkbook at home, but no, you know, the, the amount that, you know.
You're carrying your own debt on part of this project to maintain the ownership and rental income that will come from it.
That's right. We'll, we'll underwrite the whole project. So if the total development cost in round numbers, let's just say, is 320-ish million dollars and the city brings 210-ish million dollars, the difference is what we have to go find through debt, through other funding mechanisms, through the state of Colorado, through innovative financing sources. That is what we'll be spending, quite honestly, the next 12 months working on is all of that other capital raise. And that's what we've done on all of our other projects, whether they're Lytec or workforce housing.
So you have experience with that and you've demonstrated success in these other communities you listed earlier.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions on that slide? Let's keep moving along.
Sure. I, I will add just real quickly that like, we did have other developers who proposed to use a lot more debt. And so the city contribution, you know, is large. We do know that, you know, the 150 fund is once again outperforming projections. There could be as much as 130 million in fund balance by the end of this year. And so we did have proposals that proposed to use way more debt and would require way more interest. And so one thing we, you know, recommended related to Gorman was, you know, the amount of debt being used is right-sized, if you will, and it doesn't sort of over-leverage and overburden with interest down the road. The 70 million in debt, I should say, up to 70 million because there is a possibility that we could issue less of that debt, 50, 60 maybe, instead of the 70. But that, you know, that, that, that is the only portion of debt that the city will be responsible for paying back. Everything else is managed under Gorman.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah. So changing gears a little bit to the role of APSHA. There is nothing in the master development agreement with Gorman that obligates APSHA of anything. APSHA is not a party to the master development agreement between the city and Gorman. What the master development agreement does, when you see it, it obligates the city, largely myself and Kimball, to work together with APSHA to define what APSHA's role will be. A big topic of that conversation is related to tax-exempt status in past projects, and we propose once again the possibility of APSHA being a special limited partner in the operating entity that affords the operating entity tax-exempt status. We do propose to use an APSHA deed restriction. Don't think that will be an issue for APSHA in any way where the qualifications will be based on the APSHA regs. There is a significant conversation to be had with APSHA related to who's going to do what on a day-to-day basis. The idea of overburdening APSHA with operational requirements and labor requirements for this project, for this number of units, is something that we want to talk about extensively with APSHA because there's a full spectrum of what can be done by APSHA or not. You know, Gorman can take on all of qualifying, all of the applicants and performing all of the lotteries. There is a possibility that Gorman will be able to provide APSHA with all of the qualifications of everyone through a file-sharing process so that APSHA has only oversight and enforcement, the ability to audit as much or as little of that qualification process as APSHA wants to audit. Or we can split the responsibilities in a way where APSHA may want to take on some of the qualification process and some of the lottery process. I would advocate that, you know, we ask Gorman to take on as much of that as possible and allow APSHA the opportunity to perform whatever auditing and whatever enforcement oversight they need to perform so that they don't have an ongoing, very large operational burden related to the lumberyard. Those conversations, we're going into that conversation being flexible and we plan to talk initially with APSHA staff about that. APSHA has the opportunity to have final say on what the qualification process specifically looks like. That is in the APSHA regulations, but we also know that APSHA has some ways in which they operate that we want to make sure the developer understands all of the expectations before they're anywhere near a lease-up process.
Okay.
We've seen, we've seen in the past where in return for the tax-exempt status, APSHA asks for certain fees to cover some of their costs possibly. You know, that will be ultimately up to the APSHA board. And so we would aim to get started as soon as the MDA is signed to start to work with APSHA, and they know that that's coming.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems even now there's application fees for, but they're kept pretty low for people who are applying to help cover some of the costs of the review. And even potentially annual requalifications is just more paycheck stubs and things like this. So we need to, to look at that so that it, it's covered entirely. I would give us two cautions here. One is that, you know, RAFTA just had to go through a process with the State Department of Revenue to assure that the money they spent as a regional transportation authority on the development of affordable housing in Glenwood Springs, the ribbon-cutting and Polis was there to sign the bill being signed, 44 beautiful studio units for their use. But I, I just wouldn't want to see the Department of Revenue declaring something different or taking a different interpretation on the tax-exempt status through the relationship with, with APSHA. I, I think that, that, that's pivotal in terms of keeping the cost down and everything like that. So just kind of a cautionary tale. I think you probably have examples where that's been recognized in your past projects with the housing departments in those communities. So it shouldn't be of issue, but it, it was quite a surprise to RAFTA to find out they were trying to tell them something different. And then this is probably something, again, not to be settled here, but perhaps is worth discussing, is whether as part of this development agreement, Gorman would like a couple of units to be reserved for their employees to be onsite so that you are not depending, I mean, I live in a condo complex and when you call someone on call on the weekends, they're like, okay, I'll come up from rifle right away. And I don't think that that is the type of service you need when you have 280 homes or families. I, I think that something like that is entirely negotiable and entirely appropriate. It's better customer service. It's better security. It's better safety. So we should just make sure we're aware of what that ask will be and, and how we calculate that into the contracts. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Anything else to add about capabilities related to qualifying lotteries and all that?
No.
Okay. Good.
Good.
So the implementation timeline, as we see it now, is, you know, working toward, you know, given in a, you know, potential approval of a master development agreement just in a couple of weeks here, I should say a few weeks, you know, working toward that mid-2026 closing number one. Closing number one will be, so, so we talk about all at one time, right? But, you know, the mechanism will be to have two closings, one for building one and a portion of the infrastructure mid-2026. Shortly after that closing, infrastructure work can begin, work on building number one can begin, and then Gorman will start in earnest working toward closing number two, which would be building number two, building number three, and the remainder of, of the infrastructure. So once you have closing number twen, number two, you know, in 2027, work starts on buildings two and three. You're going to have all three buildings under construction all at one time, you know, and it's going to be a big construction project, right? Keep in mind that each one of those buildings is about a city block long, right? And so the scale of the site, we all see it on paper, but I think we need to remember that it's probably even bigger in reality than, than it looks on paper. So completion schedule, right now, tentatively scheduled for mid-2028 to complete building one and then start a lease-up process. Early 2029 for building two and mid-2029 for building three with the possibility of lease-up running through into 2030, more than likely. But all in all, I think when we were here a couple of years ago contemplating schedules and phasing and costs related to schedules and phasing, you know, a, a strong schedule compared to anything that we looked at back then, definitely on the low end, if not lower, you know, sooner than pretty much all of the scenarios that we looked at in the past. So, I mean, we're real pleased to present this schedule and this, you know, sort of financial opportunity to do this all at once. And I do have to say, none of this is guaranteed, right, until we get to the terms and conditions of closing number one and closing number two. But as soon as we, the sooner we can get to those closings, the sooner we lock in our timelines and all of the financing.
And actually, it's November vote that is contingent on the schedule as well. Bill?
Yeah, a couple things, thanks. Chris, one suggestion on something you just said was talking about doing a lease-up after the completion of, of, I think you were talking about building one, but it's, it's relative to all three. I would like to suggest that we pre-lease as many units as possible so that we don't have a lease-up process that only begins after the building is complete. I don't see any reason why we can't be successful in leasing a significant portion of these units prior to completion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I'd like to make sure that's, that option exists and is encouraged.
We agree.
Secondly, Kimball, have you, I, I got to assume you're contemplating modular construction for this. Have you been having conversations with box manufacturers and reserving or discussing reserving capacity?
For sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. This is a lot, all at one time, for production facilities. We have investigated several different manufacturers and so it, there are a couple of things that'll go into the decision, capacity of that plant on the timeline that we want, capacity of, of the run of the given type that we're doing, as well as, you know, meeting some of the environmental goals, cost, all the things.
Wonderful.
Modular is, is really.
The only option.
Yeah. And that still ends up requiring a lot of onsite people to help, help with the assembly and double-check everything. The other thing to ask, I think it, it goes unsaid, but the next phase of the infrastructure, and it is mentioned that some of the vertical will now be part of that, which would help us catch up on the timeline a little from not going forward with Gould. But the infrastructure will be laid for all three buildings first, even though the actual above ground for the buildings will occur in this sort of sequence.
Yeah, the sequence is the way we like to describe it. Some pieces of, like the pad itself, may delay until building two or building three, but for sure, the items that are needed to get a certificate of occupancy on building one would be done upfront in building one.
And, but again, are, is it more that the whole site's sewer, water, electric? And, but again, are, is it more that the whole site's sewer, water, electric, whatever other conduit needs to carry would, would be done at, at the first, and then the buildings one, two, three?
Generally speaking, yes. Anything that would be required to flip the switch on would go with the first part, the first phase.
Thank you.
Perfect example is, you know, the, the water mains. City utilities isn't going to let us install part of the water loop. We're going to have to install, you know, the full water loop. But there may be some pieces that they can include as building two and three only, and I'm more than happy to let you guys make those decisions.
Christine, you have a question?
Do you have an estimate of how many people, when all buildings are under construction at the same time, how many laborers will be onsite?
That's a really great question that I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I will say when we're in the heat of stick framing a building that is about the size of one of these buildings, it, you know, we can have over 150 folks onsite. Now, that's not modular, that's stick, which brings a lot of other trades onto the site that we would be packaging up through modular, but it will be very busy.
And so obviously, the airport is planned across the street for construction at the same time. What sort of planning is going into place to manage both of these projects and the sheer number of people that'll be in that area?
That's a great question, too. We'll have to develop a construction management and site management plan as part of our operations plan to make sure that we're getting people in and out safely, that we're keeping mountain rescue up and running safely. That may be one of the reasons that we do sequence some of the infrastructure over time versus all upfront at one time. There may be some instances, like the C dot work, for example, that may need to take longer, one because of building season and two just because of, of, you know, workload in that micro area.
That's a great question, Christine, and I'm, I'm wondering, since Burlingame Phase Three was modular and put together, there might be a little bit of an example of how many people would need to be onsite as a minimum, certainly whatever our contract with Gorman needs, but it might give us some idea.
Some data.
I mean, surely, Kimball would know more than I, but, you know, using modular, you don't have all the trades on the site at the same time, putting in all the electrical in the buildings, putting in all the plumbing in the buildings, putting in, you know, all of the HVAC into the buildings. A lot of the traffic that you see, a lot of the parking that you see around construction projects, a lot of it is related to the trades. And when you use modular, that's already in the boxes when they set the boxes. So we've been down that road before. And then to the regulatory piece related to construction management plans, whether the city acts as a developer, whether Gorman acts as a developer or anyone else, there's a regulatory requirement to put in place a construction management plan that gets vetted through the City of Aspen's engineering department, so they will surely have to put that in place as well.
Thank you. It's a lot of action in one spot.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for the board members right now? John?
Yeah, I just want to say this is really exciting. In spite of the minor delay, I know we can, the time could be made up doing stuff concurrently. This is awesome, two buildings have the possibility of being done before my four-year term is up. That's, that would be incredible.
Both of your four-year terms. So that is very incredible. And I, I'm just really delighted as well, highly professional presentation, Chris, and we can see all the work you've been putting into this. It answers a lot of questions.
Sure. So we do plan to come forward with July 8th. You'll see the master development agreement in its entirety at a high level. This is what's in it. We've discussed it today. So do want to schedule a follow-up work session to hit on those other topics that we've discussed? Get started with those conversations. Totally agree that it could take two work sessions for us to do that. Ultimately, want to codify that into a resolution so that we can put that together with the deed restriction, satisfy the six-month requirement to give them everything they need to go full bore. Staff is currently prepared to start working on draft ballot language. The same attorney with Butler Snow, who is helping us with this master development agreement, will be helping us with that ballot language. It doesn't sound like there are objections to that, so we do plan to continue forward with that. You ultimately will need to approve that ballot language, and we'll present that to you sometime before the end of the summer. And again, if there's anything else that you can think of that you might be asking on July 8th, feel free to ask now so that we can get a sort of heads-up of what is on your mind.
Bill?
Not a question for July 8th, but a request related to the ballot language, that it's explicitly clear that the funding that a voter is being asked to vote on is for the construction of the lumberyard.
Yeah.
Not, it's not general debt for general housing purposes, like very, I, I wanted to very explicitly state that it's for this lumberyard arrangement.
Yeah, of course. That's a good comment, and there's a lot of prescribed language from the state via Tabor about what we have to do. They make you have a ballot question all caps, which makes it a little less readable, the total debt repayment amount, and all sorts of things. So there's, within the prescribed language, but of course, this is, and I think this agreement among the council, this is for the lumberyard. This is not for any sort of general...
But because it's borrowing against this fund, it may not, I don't know the law, of course, but it may not explicitly need to state that, but I think it should state that.
Oh, yeah. No, no, we would, we would be clear. I mean, that's, we, we want to have good selling points for when we form a citizen committee together and go out and make this pass, Bill, so it'll be, we'll be, we'll have time to work on that ballot language.
Got to get rid of the traffic light for me, Chris.
So, you know, this is actually a really good point to have brought up. In the future, later on, like by mid-July, we still have some open work sessions, but that, to set some aside simply for ballot language discussions or as part of a larger discussion, I don't want to have to call special meetings in the first week of September to try to, you know, finalize ballot language. So we'll, we'll be setting some of that up a little sooner on. And I was trying to look at our future work sessions. The seventh is obviously pretty heavy-duty with the entrance to Aspen and Highway 82, West Transportation Needs, a financial update, but we will get this get, meeting scheduled as soon as possible to begin talking on the partnership agreements, a priority, things like that as well.
Yeah. So just one last thing, we're so excited to get Kimball and her team running full speed on the project. Obviously, based on our discussions, we still have a lot of work to do on the project together. So, you know, their involvement goes into high gear, our involvement doesn't end in any way. And also, we play a role in getting ready for the closing. Many of the agreements are subject to review by the city attorney's office. I usually facilitate most of those conversations throughout that process. And so, you know, while there is less sort of physical work on getting ready for a construction project for the city side, we still play a huge role in getting all the agreements ready, because ultimately, you need to approve all the agreements in an ordinance prior to the closing. And that's the piece I just wanted to mention, is all these agreements are going to be brought to you prior to the closing for city council to approve in an ordinance, and that has to be done before the closing. It facilitates the closing of all the agreements, so I should have mentioned that earlier.
Well, the main thing I'd like to do, and this is something for you and Pete to work together on, on scheduling, is to make sure we really have enough time to, to read the MDA before the meeting in July. I'm imagining it's going to be a relatively lengthy document, maybe it's not, but I, I want to make sure it's not just barely making the cutoff for the packet and then all of us over essentially the Fourth of July weekend and the Fourth of July week trying to digest 150 pages. I, I don't think we have time to truly fit a work session in just to review it before then, but I would expect everyone to put their time in to have read it, as long as we're just not getting it barely last minute. So we'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay? Any further questions on this or any closing comments you would like to make? Anyone?
Yeah.
Sam?
I didn't really say much tonight, but that's because I was just listening and I was very impressed, very excited about this, and it's pretty cool to say that this might be done by the end of the decade after the land was purchased more than a decade ago. So very exciting moving forward, and hopefully we can do it with speed and precision. Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Pete, you have any comments?
If you want to.
Oh, yeah, what is, you pull that up if you could for me.
All right.
That's a different topic than this, though, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're done with this topic. We'll let you go, and we are going to pull up the information memo that was in your packets, released about the scheduling of the construction on Wagner Park of the children's camp. And if you want to just briefly outline what that says for the general public, what options were looked at, and we can discuss it as a council, which way to proceed.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So in the informational packet this week, there was a memo just to address some of the comments from the last council meeting. There was some interest in whether or not we could delay the start of construction at Mueller Park, at Wagner Park, and try to minimize the impact of closure during kind of the tail end of the summer season. The staff has looked at the schedule and looked at some of the different options that it could address, or could, could take to address that type of issue. There's four alternatives in the packet. The last two actually are not recommended due to a lot of challenges, so just to be clear, there's really two, two viable options. The first one is to continue on with the existing schedule. That would mean that we would go in slightly after the Fourth of July and start clearing the site and doing the prep work, get the equipment delivered here and install it, and then have to pour the, the soft foam foundation or surface for the children to basically not hurt themselves, hopefully, if he fell off the apparatus. And that needs certain temperatures to be able to do that, so we have to get that done before too late in the season. So that would be option one, which is kind of the status quo. The alternative option was to basically delay until after Rugger Fest and clear the site. So basically, you would take out the existing equipment, and then basically you shut that up and put it to bed and let it sit over the winter. And then we'd come back in in the spring, and we would actually do the installation and pour the surface at that time. So that would be an alternative so that we don't hit the tail end of the summer. What that does do is removes any sort of playground facility throughout the winter and potentially the springtime until the weather's nice enough to be able to do that, that surface pour again. That does add a little bit of extra cost. It was about another 70 or so thousand dollars.
And, and why do you say, Pete, that it removes it in the winter?
So we would be clearing the site after Rugger Fest, so we would be taking out Mueller, the Mueller facility, and basically just making it a flat surface, and we'd button that up, and snow would fall over the top of that, and you would, you'd basically have nothing there during the winter season.
So not, not installing...
Anything.
Correct.
Anything until the spring.
Correct.
And was it looked at to split it so that we install everything except the soft surface?
I think there were some challenges with doing something other than the soft surface. A lot of that had to do with ADA accessibility and promising some of that to, to the folks in the community. So, so the idea was to delay any sort of installation. I don't know if there's other parameters that would prohibit that.
Yeah. You know, construction is always awkward timing-wise. I recall when I was sitting in the audience and you guys heard from people wanting to delay until the end of summer, some piping over in the West End that was kind of making noise, but it's, you know, they always say there's two seasons in Colorado, winter and construction. I personally would like to go forward with the plan the Parks Department has laid out because the not having any playground there all winter long doesn't make any sense at all to me. It's just, you know, sometimes we don't have snow until December, and sometimes that's all melted off and kids are starting to play on it in March and, and April and May and June. And a lot of those kids out there playing in May and June are, are our local kids. So I, I don't like the disruption that's going to happen, per se, but I also think it's important to kind of build while the weather is cooperative and you have a little better sense of, you know, you're going to have some rain days, but you're not going to have snow days when you thought you mobilized a crew in April or May. And so I think it's a good question to ask, and I think it's good to have had the staff to go backwards through and look at other options, but that's at least my personal feeling. And we'll ask others to weigh in the delayed schedule or the projected schedule that we currently have.
Ms. Mayor, if I could just...
Please.
This was not noticed on our work session agenda.
Okay.
And so to the extent you're asking to make a decision on whether or not to pursue the contract that you've entered currently...
You'd like me to do it tomorrow night?
I think it would be appropriate to, to do it tomorrow night, but if, if, in, in my mind, if there is an interest to discuss this topic, because right now, my understanding is it's planned to go, to start construction this summer.
Right.
If there is a desire of council to discuss that further, and I think that's what we're looking for direction from, we will add it to a regular agenda. It wasn't noticed for tomorrow night either.
Right.
So I think it will need to be added to the regular agenda, but we do, we would like some direction, and if, if that is the case, you know, I think Pete can direct his staff appropriately.
Are you essentially saying that if we're not changing direction, we don't have to notice and we...
You've already made that decision. I mean, technically, you have a contract in place that's...
Right.
Construction's set to start July, so you have that done. What I'm saying is if you want to revisit that discussion and possibly revisit that decision, then I think you need to notice it appropriately.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for jumping in. But let me know, Kate, can I take a straw poll?
Ask if there's interest in bringing it back.
How many, how many people would like to stay with the original plan and contract as we have it now? Straw poll.
Yeah. I was going to say, I see the reasoning in delaying it, and I don't, I don't see a lot of kids using that playground in winter anyway, but at the same time, thinking about this year's school schedule, if construction started, there's only going to be a month of, of construction during the middle of the summer that's going to really disrupt anything, because school year's starting in early August. I mean, there will be more kids here after that point, but it's only a month of disruption, so I think we should straw poll. I'm, I'm all for going forward with it now.
I saw Sam raise his hand.
Yeah, I just want to say I concur with your assessment of it. I really appreciate approaching it this way, since I always like the least impact. I'm a little sensitive to the impact in 2026 projects, hence why I just want to move forward. It's unfortunate that construction season happens, but it needs to happen for us to have better things a lot of the time, roads, playgrounds, buildings, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I guess it doesn't matter at this point if, because we have three that are interested in moving forward, but I do see the downside of taking this offline for the rest of the summer as well, as opposed to pushing that to the spring, because it's a very busy time at that playground, and also more noticeable to both visitors and residents. So I, thanks for bringing it forward.
Yeah, I'm struggling with it. I appreciate the work that you did to sort of analyze these alternates. As Christine pointed out, there's already three that have expressed the interest in moving forward, or continuing to move forward, but I, I just beg that you make sure that the construction team is especially sensitive to the fact that this is...
Summer.
Dead center in summer.
Impossible.
And there's so many adjacent businesses and pedestrian traffic and recreation happening there. It's a lot of potential for conflict and want to make sure there's no bad news that comes of this. So, I mean, will be a wonderful amenity for the community. I'm super excited for it. I wish the timing were better. Please make sure the impact is minimized as much as possible. Owe did.
Okay, so the project is proceeding as contracted, and save ourselves an item tomorrow. Thank you for that. And I have talked to Pete about this, just because I want to make sure we're doing everything right and getting this a little more organized. We may put discussion of information items on our agenda so it's noted. We may put discussion of information items on our agenda so it's noticed in the future, and if there's nothing to discuss, so be it. If there is something that we need to discuss, we're fully noticed to be able to do so. So we're talking about trying to get rid of any snarls and follow process appropriately.
I appreciate that.
Okay. And so those are as important to read as the rest of the packet early on. I think we're done, 15 minutes early. Thank you, Grassroots TV. We appreciate your being here, and since it's a work session, I don't have to ask anyone to call the roll to adjourn the meeting. So we're just out of here. Everyone enjoy the rest of the sunshine this beautiful afternoon. Thank you.